Good evening, it's my pleasure to welcome you to this month's Awards of Excellence. Each month, our school board takes time from one of its school board meetings to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students, our employees and staff. It is indeed my pleasure to begin the month of December's Awards of Excellence program. The FFA is an intra-curricular student organization for those interested in agriculture and leadership. Many of our middle and high school students involved in FFA participated in the state FFA convention earlier this year at Virginia Tech. It's now my privilege to recognize our students by school, and I'll start with Frederick County Middle School, earning first place in Plant Science and sixth place in Small Animal Care Career Development Event, Savannah Miller. Congratulations Savannah. Now I'd like to move on to those students who represent Robert E. Ailer Middle School in the FFA Quiz Bowl team, earning second place as a team, and fourth place high individual, Rebecca Stout. Also on that second place team, earning a sixth place high individual, Anna Borst. Also on the second place team, earning seventh place high individual, Addie Wallen. And rounding out that strong second place team for the FFA Quiz Bowl is McKenna Blair. Let's hear for our Quiz Bowl winners. Now, once again, from Robert E. Ailer Middle School, earning first place in the area of Food and Fiber Team, a first place high individual, Brodland Ireland. Also on that first place team, earning seventh place high individual, Sarah Hawkins. Continuing with the first place team, earning 10th place high individual, Keller Cooley. And rounding out the first place team in Food and Fiber is Bo Shuland. Congratulations. Continuing on with our Ailer recognitions, now in the area of Plant Science Team, earning a first place finish, also third place high individual, Kayden Showmaker. And also joining Kayden on that first place team here tonight, Brodland Ireland. We'll continue with recognitions with Robert E. Ailer, very strong team, finished this year in the area of Small Animal Care, earning first place, Matty Adcock. Also in the same area, earning seventh place, would like to recognize Hunter Legg. In the area of Agro-Science Mechanics Contest, earning second place, Jacob Stout. Congratulations Jacob. In the area of Agro-Science Fair, earning first place, Social Sciences Division, Addie Wallen. Joining Addie at the Agro-Science Fair, earning first place, Food Sciences Division, McKenna Blair. Let's hear for the accomplishments of our Robert E. Ailer Middle School team. Now we'll move on to some recognitions, recognizing James Wood High School. Continuing with our focus on FFA, in the area of Horticulture Career Development Event, earning a first place team finish, Alexandra Charrier. And joining Alexandra on that team, Caitlin Garris. Continuing with that first place team, Natalie Heath. And Grace Lilly. Chase McCubbin. And Lacy Baker McGee. Congratulations. Now we'll continue on with our James Wood High School recognitions, in the area of Nursery and Landscape Career Development Event, earning a second place finish as a team, Caitlin Garris. And joining Caitlin, Grace Lilly. Congratulations ladies. And in the area of Livestock Judging Career Development Event, earning a second place finish as a team, Haley Seabright. And joining Haley, Gracie Snyder. Let's hear it once again for our FFA James Wood Team members. We'll continue on with our FFA recognitions, Sharando High School, in the area of Dairy Cattle Evaluation Team, earning a third place finish as a team, Matea Kretzky. And we'll continue on, recognizing Sharando High School Team, earning third place in the area of Flora Culture Career Development Event, Hannah Burton. And earning first place as a team, Agronomy Career Development Event, also fifth place high individual, Matt Hartley. Now we'll transition into the Junior Agronomy Career Development Event, earning third place as a team, Jordan Petrie. And joining Jordan with that team is Haley Patterson. In the area of Junior Prepared Public Speaking, Jordan Petrie, earning first place. Congratulations Jordan, and to the whole Sharando Team, congratulations, thank you. I'm not quite done with the FFA recognitions for Sharando. In October, Sharando High School Students, Matt Hartley and Jacob Neff, I'll ask them to come forward, they participated in the National FFA Convention held in Indianapolis, Indiana. They were a Silver Rated Team and Bronze Rated Individuals in the National Agronomy Career Development Event. I believe Matt is here tonight, congratulations Matt. In September, James Wood High School FFA Students traveled to Springfield, Massachusetts to participate in the Eastern States Exposition. In the area of Nursery and Landscape Career Development Event, earning a third place team finish, Caitlin Garris. And joining Caitlin, Grace Lilly. And Chase McCubbin. Congratulations. In Livestock Judging Career Development Event, earning a fourth place finish as a team, and also earning a first place high individual, Haley Seabright. Joining Haley on that team is Gracie Snyder. Once again, congratulations. In October, students from James Wood and Sharando High Schools traveled to the Virginia State Fair to compete in various FFA events. Like to begin by recognizing the James Wood High School Team, earning a first place finish as a team, in the area of State Student Garden Design Career Development Event, like to recognize Angelina Borden. Alexander Charrier. My apologies, Alexandra. Joining Alexandra, Natalie Heath. Continuing with his first place team, Grace Lilly. Joining Grace, Chase McCubbin. And Lacy Baker McGee. Tyler Shell. And Cheyenne Zirkle. Outstanding job, congratulations. Continuing on with James Wood High School, earning third place as a team, in the area of Horticulture Demonstration Career Development, like to recognize Caitlin Garris. Also in that same area, Grace Lilly. You all can remain up there as I continue to recognize your peers, earning second place in Agro-Science Demonstration Career Development Event, Brooklyn Davis. Also joining Brooklyn on that second place team, Jessica Wiley. And in the area of State Hippology Career Development Event, earning third place, Stephanie Smith. Much to be celebrated tonight, congratulations to our James Wood High School FFA Team. Now we'll move on to our recognition of Sharando High School, in the area of Junior Agronomy Career Development Event, earning a second place finish as a team, also earning a third place high individual, Brendan Riddings, who's not here but here tonight, Brodland Ireland, who also earned a fourth place highs. Brodland, please come forward. In the area of Senior Agronomy Career Development, earning seventh place, Matt Hartley. In that same area, earning ninth place finish, Haley Patterson. And our James Wood High School Students can remain as I recognize some of your teammates in the Dairyman's Contest, earning second place as a team, Ella Borst. Joining Ella, Matt Hartley. Matea Kretzky. And Emily Organ. If you'll just remain in front of the stage, a few more recognitions here, in the area of Dairyman's Contest, earning the fifth place, Emily Organ is already up there. And we'll continue on down the line, earning sixth place, Matea Kretzky. And earning 10th place, Quina Molden. Once again, congratulations. Wow, much to be proud of with our FFA programs. Now... Students from James Wood High School received the Virginia High School League Trophy Class with special recognition in Concept Packaging. In addition, the students were gold medalists in the Columbia Scholastic Press Association with all Columbia honors for readers services for their school literary magazine afterwards. Now it's my pleasure to recognize some of those team members, like to ask that Nicole Babett, she'll come forward? In addition to being recognized as a team member, I want to add that Nicole, in this literary magazine competition, she received a Columbia Scholastic Press Association Gold Circle Award for her portfolio illustration, congratulations. And Nicole, if you'll remain there, I have some other team members that will join you now, Kristen Cody. Natalie Gladu. Tao Voss. Oliver Marino. Jay Quinn. Anna Shipman. Rounding out this team, Keely Thompson. Once again, congratulations to our James Wood High School, Virginia High School Literary Magazine Competition winners, congratulations. Now we'll move on to some DECA recognitions. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. Students from Sharando High School participated in the Virtual Business Sports Challenge in late October and in early November, and earned a second place finish in the Southern Region and ninth place nationally. I think that deserves a round of applause, what do you think? Now we want to recognize the ninth place national finishers, Joe Wagner. Joining Joe, Braden Wilkins. Once again, congratulations, ninth place nationally. Now we'll recognize some of our sports teams, in the area of cross-country. This fall, the James Wood High School Cross Country Team competed in the Northwestern District 4A Cross Country Championship, the Region 4C Cross Country Championship, and the 4A State Cross Country Championship. The boys team placed first in the 4A Northwestern District Championship, was the runner-up in the Region 4C Championship, and placed 10th in the 4A State Cross Country Championship. The girls team was runner-up in both the 4A Northwestern District and the Region 4C Championships, team placed fourth in the 4A State Cross Country Championship. Now I'd like to recognize those members that are here tonight, from the boys' cross-country team as well as the girls. Start with the boys, Nathaniel Waschner. Caleb Kemmer. Christopher White. Ethan Bowman. James Burdock. Dalton Crossman. Nathan Shade. And Colin Stainer. And I'll ask our James Wood Boys Cross Country Team to remain up here, as we continue to recognize our girls' cross-country team from James Wood. Representing the girls, Mackenzie Conyer. Kits Angel Perez. Alina Farrenhold. Natalie Huntley. Isabella Newman. Audrey Sandy. Brooke Sandy. And Faith Stover. The boys and girls teams are coached both by Michael Unda, and as you can see, quite a bit of talent. We look forward to continue great things at James Wood High School in upcoming school, next year's competition, congratulations. Lauren Beatty, I'm my apologies, yes. Lauren, my apologies, congratulations, so it just adds to that group of talented athletes, congratulations. Now we'll move on to cheer. Let's hear it for cheer, yeah. The James Wood High School Varsity Competition Cheer Team competed in the 4A Northwestern District and Region 4C Championship. The team won Northwestern District Championship and finished fourth in the Region 4C Championship. Now it's my pleasure to introduce and recognize our cheer team champions. Samatson Angel Perez. Kelsey Beard. I'll just add, as Kelsey's coming forward, she earned a Region 4C and Northwestern District First Team Selection, congratulations. Haley Combs. Kaylee Fridley. Kaylee Fridley. Valerie Galpin. Blake Gonzalez. Blake earned a Region 4C and Northwestern District Second Team Selection. Emma Groot. And Emma was recognized as Region 4C and Northwestern District Second Team Selection. Jocelyn Hempel. Jocelyn earned a Region 4C Second and Northwestern District First Team Selection. Caitlin Engel. Paige Linton. Kyla Mason. Kyla earned a Region 4C and Northwestern District First Team Selection. Madison Milburn. Caroline Partlow. Desiree Richards. Desiree earned a Northwestern District Second Team. Congratulations. Alexandra Smith. Also like to recognize Alexandra for Northwestern District Second Team Selection. Contessa Stevens. Once again, we're running out of room here. Quite a bit of talent up here. Continuing with our recognitions, Madeline Walker. Madeline was a Region 4C and Northwestern District First Team Selection. Jayla Whalen. And rounding out our James Wood High School Varsity Competition Cheer Team, Jaclyn Witt. Congratulations, girls. In August, the Valley Health Winchester Medical Center Project Search Site was recognized as the Project Search International Conference for Achieving 83% Competition Employment for the 2018 Program Participants. Project Search is a collaboration involving Valley Health, NW Works, Northwestern Community Services, the Virginia Department of Rehabilitative Services, Winchester Public Schools, and Frederick County Public Schools, and offers students with special needs an opportunity to experience the worlds of work and learn a variety of skills that are vital to acquiring and retaining a job. Now I'd like to recognize some of our professionals that serve these students that were recognized in California at this time. I'd ask that they come forward as we recognize you as a group and we certainly appreciate the service that you provide to these students in preparing them for meaningful jobs in our community. Like for representing Valley Health, Tiffany Green to come forward. As Tiffany's coming forward here, would like to ask, representing NW Works, Joey Dunlap to come forward. Representing Northwestern Community Services, Del McGeechi. And representing the Department of Rehabilitative Services, Catherine Campanelli. Representing Winchester Public Schools, Tony Carey. And representing Frederick County Public Schools, Sue Boyce. And Chuck Ashby. Also would like to recognize part of this group representing Frederick County Public Schools, Michelle Sandy. And joining Michelle Sandy, representing Frederick County Public Schools, Maria Niedry. I would ask for this group to remain because we have a couple additional things beyond the certificates. I know as you've earned recognition in California at the time, I understand they did not have your plaque. We will present you with that plaque. And also I have one additional recognition regarding this initiative. In recognition of Disability Awareness Month in October, the Virginia Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services named Mrs. Sue Boyce, the Champion Transition Coordinator for 2019. Sue is a model transition coordinator and goes above and beyond to provide services to transitioning students. She collaborates with other agencies to ensure students' needs are met. Congratulations to all. Dr. Orendorf, Dr. Angelo, and I have the privilege of attending the annual graduation held by Valley Health for our Project Search graduates and is one of the most moving emotional celebrations of the year. We thank you for what you do in terms of providing strong services for our students and strengthening our community. Congratulations. And I believe this is the community champion award that I want to present. I will ask them to remain just for a moment. I know you may want to take some pictures. Recognize, I believe, the CEO from NW Works, Deborah Taylor is here. Please join this group so we can get a few pictures. We appreciate your support. So Deborah, please come down. Once again, congratulations and thank you. We have one final recognition this evening. I'd like to recognize several of our school board members that have given countless hours over many years to serve our students and citizens of Frederick County. Tonight marks the last meeting for each of these individuals. And on behalf of the school division, I want to thank each of them for their service. First, I would like to recognize, and I'll ask these board members come forward. I'd like to recognize Back Creek District Representative, Mrs. Callie Kluber Tance. Mrs. Kluber Tance has served as a member of the board since January the 1st, 2016. I'd like to thank Mrs. Kluber Tance for her service to our community. Congratulations and thank you. I'd ask for Mrs. Kluber Tance to remain there. Each of these board members are going to be missed immensely. Now I'd like to recognize Peckham District Representative, Mr. Seth Thatcher. Mr. Thatcher has served as a member of the board since January 1st, 2016. I would thank him for his four years of service. Mr. Thatcher will continue to serve our community as the Commissioner of Revenue. So congratulations, Mr. Thatcher. And finally, I want to recognize our Board Chairman and Member-at-Large, Dr. John Lamanna. Dr. Lamanna began his service for the board in January of 2002. For those of you keeping count, that's 18 years of service to our community. I think that deserves a round of applause. In addition to recognizing Dr. Lamanna for his service as a member of our school board, we also want to honor him for his leadership as a school board chairman from both 2006, 2010, to currently 2016 to 2019. I'm going to take a minute just to add, nearly two decades of service on our school board. Most of that as chair, and then a stint as vice chair. That's quite a run, leadership as well as service to our community. During his time period, the list is too numerous to continue to highlight, but I do want to spend just a moment referencing a few. One of the first things that Dr. Lamanna was able to achieve during my tenure with him is, he was recognized in the board at the time for bringing full-day kindergarten to our area. One of the last divisions in the Commonwealth to achieve that. Been a long time ago of the school board for nearly a decade. Thanks to Dr. Lamanna, we were able to achieve not only full-day kindergarten, but also preschool, also at the elementary level. We have now instructional coaches that are building capacity at all of our elementary schools. Thanks to his leadership, those gifts will continue to give back to our community. So we thank you, and please join me in thanking, recognizing not only Dr. Lamanna, but all of our board members for their service. Thank you.